Mr. Flynn, I have six of them. Let's go ahead and take note more of them.
No, but it is present. Hippy?
Here.
Betty Tilges?
Here.
Jimmy Doyle?
Here.
Graham Timmons?
Here.
Paul Watson? Wayne Brad?
We're going to have a forum, if you'll please join me in the place of allegiance and the many standards. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, please.
Lord, we thank you for yet another day to be able to serve you. Just thank you for each council member who's here, the mayor, just be with them tonight, Lord. Let them conduct business to the best of their knowledge and best of their abilities. Just strengthen them in their homes and just be with each one here tonight that has concerns about our community. Lord, just be with our community, as he'll strengthen it, allow it to grow. We pray for our businesses, that they'll thrive and they'll be strong in what they do. We pray for businesses to come into our community, that the council will be looking toward growth and prosperity in our community. We pray for our police force, just be with them, our EMTs, our ambulance, our department, and each one of them. Be these the city employees, just lead God and direct them and pray for their safety. Lord, we pray for our country right now. The turmoil that it's in, Lord, that we'll stand strong and stand together and stand and build her up and strive that our country will come to you once again, to see your face once again, that it'll be turned around and it'll be a strong community that we live in and it'll be a strong nation once again. And I just thank you for the ability to serve you like we need to. Father, we thank you above all for your saving grace that you made in care of your die force. We ask these things on this meeting, so bless you, keep in your care. Amen.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda. We have, who was that? Okay, Wayne, Wayne has seconded it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Agenda passes. Next thing we need to do is approve and ratify bills received. At this point, I'll open it up for any discussion. If the council members have along bills received. If there is no discussion or if there is no question, then I will entertain a motion to approve the bills, approve and ratify the bills received.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and ratify bills.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Tilges to approve and ratify the bills. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second, if I have a question from Councilwoman Tilges. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? This passes six zero. Next item is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. This will be for September the 20th at 7:00 p.m. I'll open this up for discussion. If there's any discussion on the notes and the minutes of the meeting. If you please indicate that Paul Watson will be abstaining from voting due to his, he was not here at the previous meeting. So if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, or excuse me, to approve the minutes of the September 20th, City Council meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Brant to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I have a second motion.
Seconded, let Councilwoman take it bottom. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes five with no abstention. Next item on the agenda is changing of the easement to Bruce McNulty property. McNulty, do you care to address the council on this?
Okay, well, I already addressed it last month.
Yeah.
But I did get the property survey done. I want to get two copies here. Do you have one pass this round or?
Sure.
This is, this shows my proposal. This is what's in question. This is my fence line, roughly is where my fence line is. So I'm asking that you keep the 40 feet and vacate that 40 feet.
Okay.
These, which will then change, I guess I can discuss it back here.
Essentially, what you're wanting is, right now, the easement of the city impedes into your home.
Correct, and my garage.
And by the reduction of this easement by 40 feet, still leaves access to the shed that's there, the pump house.
Right.
So we're essentially just talking about taking an 80-foot easement, bringing it down to 40, and creating a more sustainable area for the property lines.
If you notice, again, like I did discuss it last meeting, with that being the west boundary on my property, the east boundary actually goes through Bacon's House, if you look at that.
Yes.
The pins are set at an offset right now because they couldn't drive into the driveway.
Perfect.
So with this easement adjustment in Bacon, I would go ahead and take that property line, that east property line, and move it to 40 feet that I'm given on that side.
Okay.
Just shifting the law. I'm not asking for anything more, I'm just trying to make it right for me and my neighbor and, you know, also allow you guys to have your access that you require.
Absolutely.
It's actually, to me, it seems like it's over generous, a 40-foot easement for, you know, your 10-foot wellhouse.
That's quite a burden.
You know, I mean, it's more than enough.
Exactly. And I, for the councilmember president, I did speak to Mr. Doyle about this. And Mr. Doyle's advice on this is to grant easement. And this has been, it has been done in the recent past where we've abated an easement. What it will take is Mr. Stumpkin will have to draft up the abatement, and then we just wrote on the air. And right now, I'd like to open this up for any discussion from councilmembers. If there are any questions, we can potentially try to answer them at this point. If there is no discussion, then I'll undertake a motion to approve or disapprove Mr. McNulty's request.
From what it was explained to me, with the railroad right there, there is no change for use for that other 40 feet. And we're not, it's not a reduction of any right-of-way as far as what the city's using now, because they're just going to the pump house and back.
Mayor, there is someone else that wants the same, wanted the same thing done, and he was refused to do this.
Okay.
So, now, I just found out about it.
You're absolutely correct. In the past, this has been on both sides, where council has decided either to grant it, and then there's been times when they've said no. Recent time where they had abated an easement is the middle school project. There was a portion there between the middle school and a homeowner that the city actually had a right-of-way on. Here, not too terribly long ago, the council voted to make the easement altogether. And so, I went to the middle school, I went to that manor. There's another situation that we brought up, where the council at that time refused the request and denied it off of 40 feet. Now, what a past council does does not bind future councils or present councils. So you have a, you have precedent both ways on this. This is your decision as a council to make at this time with this particular request that we have to reckon.
Make a motion to grant the, let's say, the easement to 40 feet.
Okay.
I have a second motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Brand, seconded, by Betty. At this point, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. This will be a roll call.
Hippy?
Yes.
Betty Tilges?
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle?
Yes.
Graham Timmons?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yes.
Wayne Brad?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Mr. Stumpkin will be writing up the abatement. May we keep this?
That's your bounty.
Okay. As soon as he gets the abatement, language done, we'll reconvene, sign on the part if things need to be good.
That's awesome, I appreciate it. And I will go ahead and pay for an additional survey for my neighbor to readjust that and for your 40-foot line.
Okay.
If you have markers or however they do that.
I'm not, when it comes to surveying and stuff like that.
That makes me do it.
I'm not that guy.
It's all French to me.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for taking the time to come see us.
You're welcome.
We have a, next item on the agenda is a library update. Due to a lot of hard work with a lot of individuals, we have an opportunity to have a library fixed, or not fixed, but the abatement for the asbestos removal. And that's really been our focal point on the library. I received this this evening. I did not, I do not have cuts, so I'll pass this around. Now, I will advise council that this is, going for this, a table of the asbestos scrap.
Is correct.
That is not, that does not replace the flooring, that removes the asbestos materials out of the library. And then, the last meeting, we had developed an RFP, or a request for proposal, to fix the library. Asbestos removal is part of it. We just need to modify that RFP before and for just a general construction versus the other, the asbestos removal and the construction and floors and details. With this, from what I understand, this is a, this is a price that does come under dead, or under the threshold that we would have to send this kind of work out for, out for bit. So if you also choose, we can decide to do this tie, and we can underword it, disprove it this evening, and they can get to work on the asbestos removal, or we can include it into the RFP for.
So we've had a motion.
And a motion to approve Spartan Services LLC, and include the abatement price of the Dixon City Library. We have a second, by Betty. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Roll call, please.
Hippy?
Yeah.
Betty Tilges?
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle?
Yes.
Graham Timmons?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yes.
Wayne Brad?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Mr. Stumpkin will be writing up the abatement. May we keep this?
That's your bounty.
Okay. As soon as he gets the abatement, language done, we'll reconvene, sign on the part if things need to be good.
That's awesome, I appreciate it. And I will go ahead and pay for an additional survey for my neighbor to readjust that and for your 40-foot line.
Okay.
If you have markers or however they do that.
I'm not, when it comes to surveying and stuff like that.
That makes me do it.
I'm not that guy.
It's all French to me.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for taking the time to come see us.
You're welcome.
We have a, next item on the agenda is a library update. Due to a lot of hard work with a lot of individuals, we have an opportunity to have a library fixed, or not fixed, but the abatement for the asbestos removal. And that's really been our focal point on the library. I received this this evening. I did not, I do not have cuts, so I'll pass this around. Now, I will advise council that this is, going for this, a table of the asbestos scrap.
Is correct.
That is not, that does not replace the flooring, that removes the asbestos materials out of the library. And then, the last meeting, we had developed an RFP, or a request for proposal, to fix the library. Asbestos removal is part of it. We just need to modify that RFP before and for just a general construction versus the other, the asbestos removal and the construction and floors and details. With this, from what I understand, this is a, this is a price that does come under dead, or under the threshold that we would have to send this kind of work out for, out for bit. So if you also choose, we can decide to do this tie, and we can underword it, disprove it this evening, and they can get to work on the asbestos removal, or we can include it into the RFP for.
So we've had a motion.
And a motion to approve Spartan Services LLC, and include the abatement price of the Dixon City Library. We have a second, by Betty. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Roll call, please. Hippy?
Yeah.
Betty Tilges?
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle?
Yes.
Graham Timmons?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yes.
Wayne Brad?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Mr. Stumpkin will be writing up the abatement. May we keep this?
That's your bounty.
Okay. As soon as he gets the abatement, language done, we'll reconvene, sign on the part if things need to be good.
That's awesome, I appreciate it. And I will go ahead and pay for an additional survey for my neighbor to readjust that and for your 40-foot line.
Okay.
If you have markers or however they do that.
I'm not, when it comes to surveying and stuff like that.
That makes me do it.
I'm not that guy.
It's all French to me.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for taking the time to come see us.
You're welcome.
We have a, next item on the agenda is a library update. Due to a lot of hard work with a lot of individuals, we have an opportunity to have a library fixed, or not fixed, but the abatement for the asbestos removal. And that's really been our focal point on the library. I received this this evening. I did not, I do not have cuts, so I'll pass this around. Now, I will advise council that this is, going for this, a table of the asbestos scrap.
Is correct.
That is not, that does not replace the flooring, that removes the asbestos materials out of the library. And then, the last meeting, we had developed an RFP, or a request for proposal, to fix the library. Asbestos removal is part of it. We just need to modify that RFP before and for just a general construction versus the other, the asbestos removal and the construction and floors and details. With this, from what I understand, this is a, this is a price that does come under dead, or under the threshold that we would have to send this kind of work out for, out for bit. So if you also so choose, we can decide to do this tie, and we can underword it, disprove it this evening, and they can get to work on the asbestos removal, or we can include it into the RFP for.
So we've had a motion.
And a motion to approve Spartan Services LLC, and include the abatement price of the Dixon City Library. We have a second, by Betty. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Roll call, please. Hippy?
Yeah.
Betty Tilges?
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle?
Yes.
Graham Timmons?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
Yes.
Wayne Brad?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Do we now have to draw a new bid for the construction?
We will, that, it's actually a nice segue into the next thing, finalizing the RFP on the library. It's a request for proposal on the library. Since we've afforded the abatement of the asbestos to Spartan Services LLC, I do anticipate that in the library, we will have to rewrite the RFP for the library minus the asbestos removals. And it's actually going to make it, it'll open it up, I think, a lot better to other personnel or other companies that can do that. I do believe that the cost of the renovations will be over the threshold, still over the threshold that we would be descended out for bit. So at that point, I would just need a motion to modi, at this point, a motion to modify the RFP to the library to such, to redact the asbestos removal and for it to be just construction of the interior of the library.
I'll second it.
A motion from Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Brand, to modify the RFP to the library to such, to redact the asbestos removal and for it to be just construction of the interior of the library.
I'll second it.
A motion from Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Brand, to modify the RFP to the library, leading the abatement of the asbestos and for it to be construction. Yes. One of the other aspects that I'm, that I've been in conversation with a few people about when it comes to the library, we have, when it comes to Dixon, we have a lot of people that are very, very passionate about the library system. I want to get the council's input on developing a steering committee for the library system. Not necessarily the library board, but a steering committee that will help determine the course of action for the library, help its growth for the next five years, for the next 10 years. That steering committee would be charged with helping or aiding us in the development of those plans, identifying with the community what the needs, wants, and resources are for a proper library system.
And would this be to get the community involved in this?
Absolutely. This would be, this would have a couple of council members on it. The rest of it would be out in the community. Yes, yes, Debbie.
Mr. Mayor, so, okay, from what I'm hearing now, we are going to refurbish the original library.
That is correct.
Okay. So do we know, are we going to be able to add on to that structure there?
That's what I'm going to, that's what I'm going to, in conversations with people, a lot of different people have a lot of great different ideas.
Right.
And that's honestly, I mean, what I want that steering committee to decide.
Right, okay.
Is what is the best course of action, and then that steering committee will be able to figure, reflective of Alderman, that's all in that committee.
Right.
Be able to present that idea as a whole instead of individual ideas.
Well, because what my understanding is from talking to the public and stuff, is that they want to expand, they want larger, therefore to be able to put in, like more, because a lot of, a lot of young people are doing college courses with the computers.
Absolutely.
And then, like, from what I understand, we don't have enough room even for all our books and stuff.
Well, and that's, and that's honestly where the steering committee comes into play.
Good, yeah. Because the citizens are very concerned about that.
Well, and the thing that I want to express with the steering committee, it helps give some ownership to the citizens.
Right.
In the direction that you guys want that library to go.
Okay, I understand.
And to the schools that you want in there.
Right.
Now, this will give you a direct voice for that.
Okay.
Instead of individually coming up, you can come together.
Right.
With this group, and get that up.
Sounds good.
Even another building at some point, I think that's what I.
In a, I, in part of the charter for this committee, I will request that the committee come up with a five-year plan, as well as a 10-year plan. Where do they want to be in five years? What resources do they want to have in five? What resources and abilities do they want to have in 10? And how are we going to get there?
But this will be the quickest way to get the library open this time.
The quickest way to get the library open is its existing condition. So. First goal that we've got with the library is to get it open so our school kids can use it, and so our community can use it. We can worry about, worry about expansion here later on. General George Patton said, "A good plan violates the executed now is better than a great plan next week." We're working on a good plan while we, as a community, develop a great plan.
Okay.
We'll get that.
Maria, then Robert. Always on this committee, and can I join? Because I talked to about 350 people about that.
I would request that anybody that would want to be on this committee, I have, I'm not limited size. I will appoint a councilperson to chair it. However, if you, if anybody in the community wants to be a part of it, send me a letter to City Hall stating, "I would like to be placed on this committee." Okay? And then that way, I just have something from you stating your intent and wishes to be on it.
Because you did, I take it you got the petitions, all the signatures from people?
No, I have not received any petitions.
At this point, we have over 400 signatures from individuals, from inside the city, as
We had one maybe back out from a parking space, but not in that flow that I can remember, no.
This one I'll leave up to the council for discussion. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that, is that in the, is that to get to anyone's homes across the street or where you're buying that one?
Chief, how does that work? The question that was brought up, emergency service vehicles, if that is designated as a one-way during school hours, how does that affect your law enforcement personnel, EMS?
It doesn't affect the Pine Street side as we have alternate routes. We would also have alternate routes on Sixth Street as well as Fifth Street. If we're just talking about that one block space.
Just Walnut?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just that one block.
So, say if you say that there will be a minimal interruption to law enforcement in that?
Correct. However, I can speak for fire and ambulance, I will tell you from a fire standpoint, if they're blocked, they'll move you.
Right. I've seen the congestion, and I've been a part of, part of it myself. I do think that, that sets some clear lines of delineation, and it also matches with the fund of the school. Because.
Maybe just channel the traffic around.
It, it would channel the traffic, and I think you're, you're going to have an increased efficiency on that versus everybody trying to turn left and get up a crowded road.
And currently, they can't go through the parking lot by the preschool playground and go around because that's Pine Street in front, and the buses come up that hill, so they really only have one option.
Right. No, the school buses will be up front.
Other side.
On the other side. The parents would be on the backside. And in reference to this request, I do endorse it as a matter, and as a parent. I think it will, I think it will help the school board, it's going to increase safety for the kids and parents.
I would make a motion that would do that.
I'll second your motion.
You have a motion. Wayne seconded by Betty, roll call vote. Hippy?
Yes.
Betty Todes?
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle?
Yes.
Ronald Timmons?
Yes.
Paul Love?
Yes.
Lane Brad?
Yes.
Six, zero. And if this passes, we will draft an ordinance, and we'll read the ordinance twice, and then you all will reiterate again.
Do we need to have it match?
To find it into law.
I'm sorry, do we need to have it match the, currently the sign and threat says seven to four, I believe?
How about, how about I come up tomorrow?
Okay.
And we'll work on the language, and that way I can get a boost your stomach.
We're going to get some sun.
I have a question. Yes. Last year, the bus would take the children, turn there at the dollar store, and the kids out on the corner right across the street, White House, but now it stops in the highway and lets the kids off. Just didn't look very safe to me.
I'll check into that.
It's not very safe. Before, they would make the turn.
Nothing was a different route then.
Oh.
Did they change that one?
When you move out, they have to change it out.
Same kids still getting off, getting off. They're not making the turn yet? Just curious.
Mrs. Parker, on behalf of the cities, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
And thank you guys for your hard work for kids, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spring, will not be here tonight, so Jesse said that she will be placed on the agenda for the members' meeting, referencing the N R ordinance. At this point, next time on the agenda is the Culverd ordinance. Now, this is the product of a lot of work, Councilman Doyle, Councilman Watson, as well as Mr. Stumpy, and someone else left the floor, and I'll let you guys discuss it, and.
This is Culverd. Did you say Culverd?
It's supposed to be Culverd.
Yeah.
It's a Culverd operation.
I'll tell you that. I will say that the words of that finalized traffic, which is partially my fault, I had some questions with it. I talked to Captain Doyle about it, both discussions, it was best to discuss some of the questions that we had for the purpose of being with the council here tonight. I want everybody to jump into the questions or.
Well, the, the one thing that we were talking, me and you were talking about is the side distance, you know? In the, in the draft that I gave Ryan, there is no side distance in it. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I'm sure we all know how the side distance requires for there, you know, where you put a driveway.
Put that driveway off.
Right. So I think the city should probably grab something in the, or this line, you know, where you can't put a.
Drive along the corner.
Right. That was really the only thing that I.
If there is this, your side distance, intersection of things, does it leave you set away a certain distance from the property line to be around the property line there? We talked about if it, if it goes in initially in concrete, which replaced, replaced it in soil. Initially, the landlord has the choice what it goes in. Shouldn't be their choice again, the same time around, it's just going to be in soil. Those are the kind of questions that, you want to make sure we iron out the first time, don't have a problem here. And we can set it out in the next.
Right.
Right.
But you know, like some people have their, their culture in concrete, they're, they're attached on the ends. Me personally, I think the city ought to just, you know, once it's in the ground, they should only put it back in the ground. You know, go to the extent of, you know, making it pretty with concrete and all that. I think, you know, if you as a homeowner wanted to do that, that's going to be fine, but I don't, I don't think the city ought to practice.
I have another question there. I understand this on houses, but if I develop a subdivision, and I'll put thirty houses in there, is, is the development of that subdivision, the culvert's on the city or on the developer? Is it for an individual homeowner? I just want to make sure I have that figured out before I bring something forward and.
Well, basically, the practice, I think we should use either the homeowner buys the material, meaning culvert and ground, put the culvert in the ground. And then the city would then perform the labor to install it, or the city will buy the culvert and the material, and the homeowner will be responsible, that would be their choice at the time of, you know, a new driveway on you. Plus, you know, most of the practices are as far as culvert.
Yeah, the city is responsible.
Right, once it's in the ground, then we're going to care.
And to kind of bring everybody up to speed, what this is, is this is solidifying a business practice that the city, from what I understand, that the city currently does. What this does is this puts, specifically outlines this in law, that this is how we're going to engage in this business practice. And these guys have done some amazing work with this, and put a lot of thought and effort into it.
How many culverts have we talked to and got under practice?
Depending on new homes versus how many, if a, how many culverts have you replaced.
There'll never be thousands of culverts in the city, Dick.
There's a wide range of culverts that's, yeah, needs to be targeted.
Well, what happens if, so, what's the, so, how do we, how do we fix expenses?
The way, if, the way I have it right now, once, if it's in the ground right now.
Now, I'm drawing that out of the materials and stuff.
Right.
If they're not able to pay for the expenses.
Well, what I'm saying is if it's, it's an existing culvert right now, the city's going to care.
How, whatever it's included?
If it's a new one, then this could be bad.
But if they, what's what I'm saying, like if they are not able to take care of their portion, then what is the city going to do? We need to discuss that maybe.
Right.
That's right.
You can take out the money for a new house, they probably got a couple of culvert.
And that, and that may be something that, it may not, it may be, I may inherit a house that, that I'm going to put a new culvert in. If I don't have the funds to put the, to match with the city that's culvert in, is this maybe something that person can address with the city council in the bit on a case-by-case basis and ask from the waiver? And we address it that way.
Or make payments.
And do we do it that way, or, you know, some sort of kind of, that's all some, all things that you guys should discuss and add to, and wait on with this ordinance.
Is this proposal going to be put out for the public to read and put their input into it before it's voted on and passed? Or is it going to be like all the rest on, on the Reddit, the council meeting?
That will be quite honestly, it is up to the author of the legislation, how much community he wants to solicit for that. Once he submits a draft to the council, at that point, the council then has to entertain motion to read the legislation. So with that, I would say if you have questions or, or comments about it, to get the Councilman Doyle, get the Councilman Watson, or the respective council members, and utilize that, utilize them, hey, this is my two cents on this matter. This is what I want, I would like to see in the legislation.
But how will, how will a citizen know what's in the legislation until they read it?
It, when, when Mr. Doyle finishes his proposal, he will submit it to the council, and then at that point, and then it becomes a workable product for everybody at that point. Short of that, Robert, I would say call Mr. Doyle and ask him.
Hey, you contact, I have no problem with anybody, you want to see a copy of it, you know, let me all search one up.
Well, I, I know that there is a stat, a proper procedure for an ordinance. And one of the procedures is to post it for public notice before the council acts on it.
Okay, now we're going to follow the proper procedures for it. And so, is there any other discussion on this? Okay. At that point, we'll close the discussion on the Culverd ordinance and nuisance ordinance. This is a update from Mr. Stumpy as far as where he's at with the draft of the nuisance ordinance.
I have a, I'm trying to kind of put all the potential nuisances together at one time, be they building issues that are, that are dangerous, combination things, dead trees, handover roads, tall grass, just a whole nine yards of damage on board. One thing that the nuisance statute requires is that if someone has an issue with the pressure nuisance, is they have the ability to attest that to some kind of governing body or board for it. There's also a person needing to be able to send their request for the notice of that hearing to, and you can figure out as the council who that person is that receives the request for the hearing. And then what agency, board, body, whatever, the city council, the committee that sets forth on nuisance issues or whomever, that will then hear any complaints on the process or the need to obey the proper. So until we know who it can be sent to and who will hear it, kind of a stance that at some point we would finish you out of this ordinance. The standard also allows whomever is the head of this board, body, committee, I'm not sure what to call it because it's not determined, that they could grant, they could not possess, they, they could have the option given by the council to, to waive the ten-day requirement to request hearing to be given time. If, if the council decides to put in a ordinance, we need to see, well, is it for cause or just can they do, really believe what they do for, or what's the oversight upon to grant you that additional time for the hearing? It is not required to be given, but it can be given. And so those are all things that probably pretty important to figure out with that ordinance before it comes forth and is voted on. Remember the first is it's identified from, at the city, who has given the notice for the hearing. It needs to be someone who's present and can be found, and if it's Councilman Doyle or F E, they're not at City Hall every day, and so it's kind of hard to give you the notice that they're going to be there. So we need to make sure whoever is determined to be the person to receive the notice for the hearing is somebody who's present at City Hall during recess hours generally, so that it's going to be given in a timely fashion.
That, that is a good assumption. At this point, I'll open this up for discussion of this, as far as who we want to be that focal point. Now, these recommendations are coming from state law changes that are going to affect as of the twenty-eighth of last month. So the twenty-eighth, with the, as state law changes, the requirements, we're having to change ours, and that's why we're working this. When it comes to the nuisance ordinance as a whole, right now it's very confusing, and it's not very clear as for the enforcement of it. This will, one of the issues that this will identify, a clear path of enforcement for the ordinance, or for the nuisance ordinance is, and in clear direction for not only the city council, but the citizens as a whole as well, so.
What's the definition of nuisance? I mean, I, I don't know.
Burn down buildings, like on Maple, there are two buildings that are burned down. Is there a special, or two where these have to be removed?
I, I've written the definitions, it's about ninety pages.
Okay. Well, there's, there is.
It can be a dead animal that smells bad, it can be broken windows, a burned down building, it can be dead tree or a tangled sidewalk, so it can be tall grass, it can be an environment on your property that can bite some worms and rats and things like that to come into your area. Yeah. To keep you dressed.
The reason why I ask is because I'm visiting a neighbor up the road, he was retired, military, and then retired from working at prison, I mean, great people, and I asked him, I said, "Why are they longer moving?" He says, "Well, it's not like I," he said, "I really don't want to." He said, "But every day I got to look out and see that." And he was talking about across the road, people up across the road, and it's like really bad, you know, so. And I mean, it's a shame to lose somebody, I mean, wow, I'm surprised, I mean.
This, this expedites the process, and it clears up the, when we, when we are finished with this, this will remove the confusion as to how to enforce the ordinances fairly across the boards and to make them applicable every time. So I think the first thing we need to do is, one, decide who we got that's fully contracted to be at City Hall, and then we go with that. Now, before we get into that, though, I will say with any ordinance or anything else, if you want to speak on a particular subject matter, say we bring this up, and we're not finished with it yet, obviously, and you want to specifically add some things to it, you are more than welcome as the public to get in contact with Mr. Fleming a week prior to the meeting and say, "I want to be on the agenda to speak about this, on this particular ordinance review." So that way you have an opportunity to fully explain your points of view as a. So that way you have an opportunity to fully explain your points of view as a citizen, not just, just off the cuff, so to speak, so.
Debbie, one thing I included in here is, in one definitional section, essentially interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or tends to depreciate the value of the property of others. So that's part of the definition here. It's very cumbersome, but it's trying to get little different things that, there's so many ways to make you tear down your property values. There's attractive nuisances that, there's an old abandoned building that squatters like to go to, or kids like to play in, where they can get hurt. And that's an attractive nuisance that falls under these definitions as well. So they've been defined both in a strict definitional purpose and then I go through an illustrious enumeration as well. It kind of gives examples of, besides just giving a dictionary definition, kind of gives some ways that it's seen as well. So we're trying to adapt at all angles with those definitions, just try and clean up what we can't clean up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. How do you have a recommendation on who you want to be in point of contact for the nuisance? As far as the appeal of the nuisance?
Well, you're always close by and so am I.
I'm just too of us.
I know. I have a business right down the road.
We are talking about making this part of, of the ordinance as a law. The also clerk is also the studying of records. So any records that are received, we obviously scan and use a copy of it for future purposes, so. As far as for that particular item, I don't think that that would be a bad thing to have, to be the point of contact for the initial. For the initial part, I do believe that we need a body of choice, causing this one or another, to stay either, yes, we're going to grant an extension or we're going to, and who, who that here is or who that here is. So I think that might be, that it would rat out a little bit. Now, we have, on normal business, we have one meeting coming up. First one's given a ten days notice.
They have ten days from the point of notice to request the hearing.
Right.
And then the hearing needs to set the time, the time we standard. So if the notice of nuisance is, will be given nine days ago and tomorrow someone requests the hearing, if it's the council meets on the issue, well, they filed on day eleven and they wanted variance to file that ten day notice of hearing, when is, is that granted four weeks from now? I mean, that's the issue of the council or whoever it is that oversees that.
You're right. It could be potentially going into a longer time period. You're absolutely correct. The other thing that we can do with that is to have a nuisance committee that hears these. As soon as they get one, as soon as Jesse gets one, as far as the notification, you can attach the chair. The chair sets the twenty-four hour notice and sets a meeting with that, in a reasonable timeframe. And then at that point, that person has, the committee can recommend what course of action to do to them.
I have one more question regarding the nuisances. Say, somebody lives a class from property that is really, really falling down, attracts the wrong kind of people. Can this move into a legal matter as a quality of life or hands? And can we get into trouble as a city because of this if we cannot take care of it fast enough?
I don't believe so. Because you have the freedom to move wherever you want to. The city is, is, has a procedure now to deal with nuisance and they are revamping that. So I think as long as we continue to have means to abate nuisances, I think the city is fine in that regard.
Well, as long as we can do this, because a lot of people, that, you know, that people, I mean, how good people and bad people may be, if they don't do something quick.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why we're going to do this right now.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this right now? If there is no further discussion, we can close the discussion on the nuisance ordinance.
I guess my question is, do you, do you want to decide tonight? Do you want a committee, the council? What kind of hearing body do you want these things to come aboard? Or do you want time to think about that, discuss it, the committee?
It would be nice to have several on the board, also several on committee. And they can see something out there, they could bring it.
Well, that committee. That would be one of the things.
Anybody in the committee could notify the council, the police chief or member, that there's a problem in a certain area and it can begin to be complaint driven. The problem you have there is, Maria and I are neighbors. She has dogs. I like dogs. They scare me. They bite me. So all of a sudden, I must start calling on her because I don't like her dogs. And so there's the complaint over the issue that becomes problematic sometimes. But that's why it's important when those complaints come forth. Well, the complaint's here, here's the ordinance. Well, I was out here saying you can't have dogs. I'm just out of, I'm just scared of your dogs, right? So that is a fault there. So you'll bear through those things. Anybody who's leave one in the community can lodge a nuisance complaint about a piece of property. It does require a certain committee who had to come to, to pursue that supposedly.
Then I send you to exposure therapy.
So at this point, I guess, do we want to go ahead and get in the direction of having a meeting on this? Or do we want to have some more time to deliberate and talk amongst yourselves? Okay. Well, reasonably speaking, I think by the next meeting, we can decide what route we want to take. And it's a quick variation for kind of putting it to light. But it will be approved, of course, in that way. So the nuisance will be discussed up in November and we'll talk about it some more. Thank you. Close discussion. We'll have the recent police department, Chief Gary Ray.
I don't have too much of a police report. We're closing out numbers for the first year. However, I'm passing out the recent green ports. Missouri Supreme Court ruling that just came out, and I want to briefly explain to you some immediate effects that are going to affect us and then some down the road effects. And we have some actual items to think about. As everyone knows, over the last year, we've been receiving and learning fallout from things that took place in Ferguson, municipalities around there. Some of those changes have affected us through like Senate Bill Five over the last year. Some of these things are going to be, going to be foreign to you because we just implemented them and moved on. Senate Bill Five affected the difference in our arrest procedures, how long we can hold somebody without a warrant, et cetera, et cetera. Then there was Senate Bill Five Seventy-Nine, affected the fines, different things like that. Missouri Supreme Court just handed down a ruling on the twentieth of September that affects the municipal courts. The reason we need to discuss this is it kind of plays in the part of different things we've been talking about the last couple of months. I think library, police department, court, city hall, all these things encompass. In this order, we must be in the last budget life first, two thousand seventeen, which is nine months away from now. One of the major things that it affects and that we've implemented starting the first is there are no longer any mandatory bonds in the city of Dixon. We visited some sister cities. We were now a strictly book and or lease policy per the state. One other thing that it's affecting, and this is something that needs to be addressed probably this evening after speaking to Jesse. What this is doing is it's separating the courts from police departments and city halls, integrity of the court. Learned effects from there. We don't have that, and that's, that's one thing we got to establish. It clearly defines in here and these pages are marked. So I'll see if I can read.
I'm looking on page six of sixteen.
Basically, in a nutshell, what it states is your court clerk must be a separate entity and cannot perform dual functions. That's currently what we have now. Our court clerk is the daytime dispatcher. We have to eliminate that. That's the, that's what I was referring to as it's going to impact us now. We have the ability tonight to make an amendment to what this ultimately is going to cost us is another employee. Through all these rulings, they never, they didn't think about the small cities and the impact that the cost is going to have on us.
Excuse me, Chief. When you said it's going to cost us an employee, it's not, we're terminating anybody.
No.
It's requiring to have to hire another FTE, correct?
Correct. The court clerk must be a court clerk, a court clerk only, is what they're stating. A dispatcher must be a dispatcher. So therefore, that adds a person. What this does is it eliminates a lot of things. The court system ultimately by July must be a complete separate entity. We cannot have court in the police department. It's inappropriate according to this ruling. It does not show an independent governmental body. So therefore, these are the steps that they're taking. The court clerk's office, it must be an open office to the public. Therefore, people have access to pay their bonds, use credit cards, get dockets, et cetera, et cetera. That office must be open thirty hours a week, minimum, et cetera, et cetera. Once again, we don't have that. So tonight, somehow, we need to address or make an amendment to the upcoming budget approval to separate the court clerk now from the dispatch. I mean, we have, where we can allocate those funds to do it. If we kick the ball, we wait, say, April, May, we get ready to comply with this, we're going to realize we didn't budget for this. We have a chance to get ahead of this and budget it now.
You are correct. We would not be able to vote specifically on this, on this issue. However, assignments of personnel and their job duties, you can address in closed session for personnel matters. And we'll move, this council will be going into closed session a little bit later. So you'll be able to address the, that aspect of it, but not the funding aspect. That will have to be put on the agenda for November. That's, that's what I mean. It would, we would have to address the budget for that. And that will have to be an item that is placed on the agenda specifically to create an FTE for the, for this, this recent ruling. This is a very lengthy Supreme Court ruling, sixteen pages. What I would recommend.
So the only three main points earlier to touch on is the establishment of a court clerk's office or the court clerk. The city has to establish a website to where the court clerk is able to publish dockets, publish warrants, and there's, there's a list of things.
Maybe I'll take fines to get them online. That's not a, a problem as well. There's several things. I don't need to interrupt. This goes out of Senate Bill Five, Five Seventy-Two. And then this is a review of the court clerk's procedures through the Supreme, through the, the ruling defined in that issue. Now, I was at a meeting before last, I believe it was, on this. And there's a discussion that they are going to further change this thing next spring as well. So we need to take measures to follow this when this is coming up. But it appears come August twenty-eighth, this is July first, August twenty eighth, they're going to be holding another set of rules to come behind it as well. There's also some municipalities that have discussed filing suit against the state as these are unfunded mandates requiring the city to create jobs and create new roles to do. Well, the city that requires you to do job X, they've got a mechanism to make you pay for that, that job. And so there's, there's that discussion. But a lot of that, we need to be conscious of this and start moving directions to make sure we comply with this or we're getting on hold.
And what else to say for, for the media that's in our own? This is a Supreme Court of Missouri, not the United States decision. This is Missouri Supreme Court decision. I think we further take this up in closed session as far as specific personnel and as far as the job duties. And we go from there with it. And do make the necessary, we'll make the necessary changes from there. Chief, what else you hear? At this point, we've reached the end of our agenda items for open session. The Dixon City Council will be in closed session for revised Missouri statute, six-ten, point zero two, personnel matters. At, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. We have the motion of Councilman Watson, Secretary of State, Councilman Doyle, go, 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 closed session. Paige Hildes.
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle.
Yes.
Graham Simmons. Paul Watson. Wayne Brad. Several men on closed session. At this point in time, the Dixon City Council is in closed session. At this time, I would invite everybody to turn all recording devices off, with the exception of Mr. Fleming. Mr. Fleming does.